I'm gonna call this meeting to order. A delegance to the
Do this like Justice for all.
Can you mute yourself while you're not talking just so that we don't get that kind of Go to talk. This year, a G V O clear and pass you on to Abegg via Zoom. Also, solicitor Start with our reorganization meeting. The first up for appointment is
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Second, Vice Chairman.
Second.
Aye.
I'd like to nominate Don Januso.
Second. Aye.
Depository, Washington Financial
Second.
Aye.
Wage Enforcement Washington Suits
Washington Sanitation Council.
Thank you, Tom. Moved and seconded, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Animal Control Officer. Make a motion for Kim Sikri. I'd also like to point out that the contract includes pickup of cats and dogs at a rate of $450. Moved and seconded. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Emergency Management Coordinator, I'd like to nominate Renato Razzini. Moved and seconded. Solicitor. Gretchen Moore of Strasburger McKenna. Got Nick Angefsky, sorry, got something. Number 12 Township Engineer, I'd like to nominate. The end is off of the gate. Aye. Number 13 Zoning Officer. Aye. Number 14 Zoning Hearing Board Members, needing like $100 per person per Wait, 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 that's, this is just the payment of Yeah, that's what I said, this is just the payment of the
Make your motion.
I'll second, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Number 15 Resolution. On 2021, Real Estate Tax Collector. Sorry? Okay, it's been moved and seconded, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Tax Collector. Bill, you're nominating Keystone Tax Eric? That's Eric's motion. Oh, there's a second. Moved and seconded, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Resolution number three, 2021, LST Tax Collector. Those in favor, signify by saying aye. Resolution number four, 2021, Delinquent LST and Delinquent EIT Tax Collector. Tax Services. Been moved and seconded. Resolution five, 2021, Realty Transfer Tax Collector. Debbie Bardella is the one who did it this time. Eligible this coming year. I'd like to make a motion for Debbie Bardella. Aye. Aye. Resolution number six, 2021, Set the Realty Tax Collector Bond at 30% of the tax people get Resolution number seven, 2021, Municipal Authority Member.
Nominate Kim Sikri.
Got a resume from I don't know, what was his name, I'm sorry? Have any information? Hold on, hold on, there's been a motion, a second, but we, um, I don't have any, I don't know who he is. Generally, if somebody's gonna be nominated, the other board members either know who they are. Resume or information. I mean, that's great that he's ready, willing, and able, but How do you? I'm just struggling to understand, Eric, you're the one that's always hurting on me or helping people, but you expect it. Maybe I would've voted for him, maybe I wouldn't have, but you didn't even share the information, did you share it on? Wait, hold on, hold on. Eric, I'd like to ask that we table this till the end of the meeting, you can send us, send the, uh, the information to us Your computer and we can take five minutes look through it. Does he have? Does he have engineer? Eric, just Okay, so can we table this then until the end of the meeting? Frank, are you okay with Steven? That's what I'm asking, Frank, can you? Okay, it's been moved and seconded, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. I have to abstain. Three, one and one. No, three, one and one, yeah, I can't, I can't. Um. It's too late. Um, before we do Before we do 22, I have, we have to first accept the resignations of George Augustine and Dave Martintic, who resigned in December from the All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Now moving on to Resolution number eight, 2021, Zoning Hearing Board Members, there's Vacancies for the main board. One vacancy of Hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on, Eric, hold on, Eric, hold on, I'll let you start. We need to do them one at a time, just so that we're clear, so for the first vacancy. Like to nominate who, Eric? Okay, Eric, stop, Eric, stop! Eric, stop! Okay, we're not even, no, we're not even What you're saying, and I just said we're doing it one at a time. The first, Eric, let's stop. Eric, stop, hold on. That was just for the money. So, hold on, is Alan Eric, please mute yourself, or we're gonna have to mute for you because we can't hear what anybody's saying, just hold on one second. Um, Don, is it Alan Barney? Okay, so there is a motion on the floor for Alan Barney for zoning hearing board, is there a second? Moved and seconded So, yeah, so it is one resolution, but they're different years, see, Eric, see, it says January 1st, 2022, January Eric, you can't, Eric, stop, we're not doing it that way, I'm telling you, we're doing them one at a time, so the first one we're doing is the vacancy of a one-year term To expire January 1st, 2022. It's been moved and seconded for Alan Barney. Take a vote on that. All those in favor of appointing Alan Barney to this term, say aye. Aye. Okay, so, wait, uh Is there a second for Lauren Anderson? He was on our, he was on It's been moved and seconded for Lauren Anderson. For, um For, it's, for a term to expire January 1st, 2023. Seconded, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Now, for, this is the vacancy of a three-year term to expire January It's the, see It's not, it's, his term is up, okay, that, that makes more sense, it says vacancy of three years, but it's not Okay, so a term Those in favor, signify by saying aye. Um, Resolution nine, 2021, Zoning Hearing Board Alternate Member. This is, um, the seat that Alan Barney previously held, he is now moving from alternate to new member, so Uh, Resolution, number 24, Resolution 10, 2021, Parks and Recreation Board Members, this is a vacancy of a three-year term. Um, expired January 1st, 2024, I'd like to nominate Stephanie G. Moved and seconded, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Stephanie G., she, Don sent us all her email. The letter of interest. It's been moved and seconded, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. This is the second vacancy of a four-year term to expire January 1st, 2025, I'd like to nominate Dan Uwig. D W I probably can't Probably can't Uwig, Eric, saying I made a motion, is there a second? All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Eric, did you say? Eric, did you say yes? Actually asked for a no, I just asked, I didn't hear you say that. Resolution number 11, 2021, The Frank Saris Library Board, it's a vacancy of three-year term, January 1st, 2021 through December 31st, 2023. I'd like to nominate Diane Burke. Seconded, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Resolution 12, 21, Plan and Commission, it's a vacancy of a four-year term to expire January 1st, 2025. Moved and seconded, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Resolution 13, 2021, Certified Public Accounting Firm, Hosak Spackmutil and Woods, OLP, second year of a three-year contract. Second. Aye. Resolution 14, 2021, Chief Administrative Officers of Pensions, Donald, I'd like to nominate Don Januso. 15, 2021, Non-Uniform Pension Fund 3% of their gross salary toward the pension. Moved and seconded, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Resolution 16, 2021 5% of their gross salary toward the pension. Resolution 17, 2021, Vacancy Board Members, I'd make a motion for Tom Abegg. Um, I'd make a motion, Yellowstone Markley. I'd like to make a motion I don't think she should hold Already been reappointed. Resolution number 18, 2021, Established Dates for Board Resolution 19, 2021, Set the Employees' Pay Schedule as every other Thursday. Your benefits will remain the same That's my Aye. Resolution 20, 21 Resolution 21, 21 On 2021, like the voting delegate Yes, yes. Yes, yes, he gets an equal vote. Yes. I made a motion, is there a second? Seconded, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Um, Reorganization Meeting is adjourned. Not anybody, we can do that at a later meeting. We still have to, Don, will you mark down that we We'll have to come back and, for the ultimate Moving on to our regular monthly meeting, I'm not gonna call it to order, we don't have to salute the nation's flag. Um, I also am not gonna call again And then, um Okay, so, just a reminder that Cecil is adding a mass communication feature to our website to better communicate with our residents in the event of an emergency. Telephone, text message, and More information to follow in February 2021, this is new.
Okay.
Um, Jack's working on it with our website company called Civic What's it called?
Civic Ready.
Civic Ready, thank you. Um, so Have that team. Quickly before we get started, I'd just like to say thank you, um, specifically to Jack, the other township employees that work Virus cares funding
Uh, 374-13709.
About 374 Coronavirus money from It came from
Originally, originally, uh, came from Federal government, then, then to the state, and then to the Based on an algorithm, so
Awesome. So it was spearheaded by Jack and, um, worked on with And it's Resolutions, moving on to resolutions. 22, 2020, sorry. 22, 2021, Consider Application 2020, 0005 of the Wa- For the Washington Hospital, Cecil Clinic Parking Expansion, Contingent Upon Addressing Comments. The Township Engineers Letter dated November 12th, 2020. Location 3415 Miller's Run Road. Applicant Washington Hospital. The Planning Commission Recommended Plan Approval He said that they were too bright, so he's making That's the, um, contingency Said that's what they're gonna have them fix. Guys, a motion? Have a second? Aye. Justice 50. 23, 2021, Consider Application 2020, 0040 for the Saka Subdivision, Number One Plan, Contingent Upon Addressing Comments. Township Engineers Letter dated November 7th, 2020. Location 50 Riverside Drive, McDonald, R1 Low Density Residential Zoning District. Applicant Cyril Jane Saka. The Planning Commission Recommended Plan Approval Question? Aye. Twenty-four, twenty twenty-one, consider application twenty twenty, oh, oh, forty-one for the Shiloh Development Company. From the Township Engineers' Letter dated December sixteenth, twenty twenty, location two oh four, Commerce Hall of War, Iwan, Light Industrial Zoning District, applicant Shiloh Development Company, the planning commission recommended plan approval with the contingency number seven. I'll second, all those in favor. Aye. Aye. Twenty-five, twenty twenty-one, consider application twenty twenty, oh, oh, forty-two for the Dowch subdivision, number one plan, location one, Canonsburg, R two, medium-density residential zoning district, applicants Tom and Chelsea Dowch, the planning commission recommended plan approval on November seventeenth, twenty twenty. I'll second, it's been moved. Aye. Six, twenty twenty-one, consider application twenty twenty, oh, oh, forty-three, for the Smaitkowski, south, and number one, location five oh four, Swihart Road, Canonsburg, R one, low-density residential zoning district, applicant Scott Smaitkowski, Renee Scott, and Terry Miller. Seven, twenty twenty-one, consider the fourth and final release of financial security hosted for installation of public improvements, total was paid for in the amount of two hundred twenty-four thousand, one hundred and five dollars, recommended by the Township Engineer group, accepted and the maintenance. I'll make a motion. Passes five zero. Twenty-nine, twenty twenty-one, consider the minutes from the Monday, December seventh, twenty twenty, since the township board supervisor. I skipped one. Twenty-eight, twenty twenty, sorry, twenty-eight, twenty twenty-one, consider the fourth and final release of financial security hosted for the installation of public improvement, over thirty-five, in the amount of one eighty-five, two ninety-four, twenty-five is recommended by the township engineer. Roads have been accepted in the. I'll make a motion, is there a second? Nine, twenty twenty-one, consider the minutes from the Monday, December seventh, twenty twenty, since the township board. Second. Aye. Thirty, twenty twenty-one, consider the general funding orders from September first to December thirty-first, twenty twenty twenty-two. Um, board of supervisors, discussion of. Uh, quickly before we get into that, I don't wanna forget to announce that we hold an executive session prior to this meeting for attorney-client privileged information. Go ahead, sorry. Um, old business. Quickly, um, I'd just like to remind this board that we have a fire department meeting coming up. Any old business that, that meeting is just a continuation of. It's just a continuation of that meeting we had in December. It's the fire department meeting, Tom, with Jerry. He texts me that he can come back the twenty-eighth of. I did, I asked them before. Dawn, we agreed to extend waste management's contract and wanted to add that dollar on pickup of the hazardous materials, like. Yeah, but Ron called and he's right, I looked at my bill, it's not on the bill. So we'll have to contact them and make sure that they added that on in the. I texted him and emailed him, but can you ask me, asked them to send out a schedule for recycling. I emailed him. That'll be with the information. Cause you actually have to call the schedule that, cut it out with your TV, so you'll need to. Any other things? I will get, get it to you guys, I don't have it handy, but I do have it at home. It will also go out in a mailer to all the residents with their, their. Any other information? All right, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Well, I, I, I was gonna give you a swivel chair and, and send you, just so you know, this. It's there, it's just. Okay, all right, I'm gonna do the same thing and send it out, you know, as an S F N.